We, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we're going to go ahead and start the meeting of the Monterey County Planning Commission of May 14, 2026. And I'm sorry, 2025. My glasses, my glasses deceive me. Can't see with them, can't see without them. So I saw six and I said, wait a minute. Anyways, with that, this is calling the meeting to order. And with that, we're going to go ahead and have a roll call.
Commissioner Mendoza? Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
Commissioner Monsalve?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Hartzell, Robert, and Getzelman are not here today. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And with that, we move to the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Getzelman is not here. And Commissioner Hartzell is, let me see, not here. So how about Commissioner Gomez?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gomez. With that, let's see, it is time for public comments. And at this point, if we can inform the public, if they would like to participate in public comments, how they would do it through Zoom or through email. So, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. While we get our screen to display, thank you for joining us today for the County Monterey's Planning Commission meeting. If you are joining us via Zoom, we invite your comments during public comment today. To do so on the Zoom platform, you may raise your hand by opening the reactions at the bottom of your screen and clicking the raise hand icon. On a mobile or landline phone, you can raise and lower your hand by pressing star nine. Another way you can participate is by sending an email to pchearingcomments@countymonterey.gov. This address is also found on the agenda for today. We do monitor that email in real time during today's meeting, but there is no guarantee now that the meeting has started that we will capture all comments, but we absolutely do our best. For those wishing to speak during public comment, when it is your opportunity, you'll be granted permission by the meeting clerk to unmute yourself during that public comment. If you are given that opportunity on the Zoom platform, you can mute and unmute by clicking the microphone icon at the bottom of your screen. And if you're on phone, you can mute and unmute by using star six. And if you are here in chambers during public comment, you can just come up to the front and you'll be acknowledged by the chair. We are also very happy to continue our pilot program with Wordly. Wordly is an automated translation program that is available to participants. If you are here in chambers, which I don't see anyone, you may come to the front and you may pick up some headsets for that translation. If you are joining remotely, you can scan the QR code or go to the website that's available here on your screen. When it brings you to the second step, you may select the language that you would like to have translated into, and then hopefully that works smoothly for you. So thank you for joining us today, and I'll pass it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you for that information. And we are, like I said, in public comments. So this is a time set aside for the public to comment on a matter that is not on the agenda. You have three minutes. So if anybody in the chambers would like to address the commission, this would be the time to do it. There being none, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails that would like to address the commission?
There are no additional emails or hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. Now we move to the next item on the agenda, and that's if there are any additions, deletions, and/or corrections.
For the record, we received and distributed additional correspondence for Agenda Item Number Two, PLN 240029, and Agenda Item Number Three, PLN 2402222.
Thank you. And that information is on the back desk or table?
Yes, it's in the back table.
Thank you. With that, we move to the next item on the agenda, and this is Commissioners' Comments, Requests, and Referrals. And this is a time set aside for the commission to comment, request, or refer a matter that is on or not on the agenda. So, any commissioners. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things. One of them is a request to staff for each staff report to contain the planner's full phone number, because we get an extension, but I'm never quite sure over the years that's changed. So if we could just make a practice of making it easier to contact that person without looking them up online, my old eyes would appreciate it. My second point is a larger point, and it arises from my work with my community in Big Sur, but it's true around the county, in that I've gotten a number of area-wide concerns about what is legal and what is not with respect to fire field mitigation work around people's homes. So I'm wondering if we could have a referral just to understand what the current requirements are, when people need permits, is there any effort to clarify those so that fewer and fewer permits are required to do work which is required, particularly by insurance or by the, recommended by the fire protection people? Because I've had folks come to me and say, I can't do my insurance clearance because I don't think I'm going to be allowed to. And so, we don't want that, obviously. So if we could have a referral just to discuss in the county as a whole, what is allowed without any oversight, what requires oversight of what kind, and what efforts we're making to bring together requirements and oversight requirements to make it easy for people to do what we want them to do? I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, we move to the next item on the agenda. And, let me see. And the next item, sorry, I got a little confused here, but the next item is referrals.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Melanie Bredy, Chief of Planning. So this is, this is an update on existing referrals. I do want to acknowledge Commissioner Deal's request, and staff is working on a number of different initiatives. So we'll look at trying to come back sooner than later with some organized input in terms of what's clear and orienting people on what they can and can't do, and where to get that information. And then there might be a longer lag for coming back and looking more comprehensively at our regulations and what we may be doing. So we will incorporate that into our referral matrix. So I have updated the referral matrix. Everything I'm trying to do updates in bold, so it's easier to find. So if you have any questions, please let me know. Two of the more significant ones that I did just want to flag for the commission, referral number 22.2A, requesting information related to the 1982 general plan implementation and its approach to an update. So we had a significant discussion. We had a presentation last week. Staff actually would like to propose, if it's amenable to the commission, if not, that's fine, we'd like to propose that we actually fold in kind of the outcome of that discussion into our long-range work program, and that we actually incorporate over this next year into our long-range work program what that looks like for each land use area. So those are included and added on our list, and/or folded in directly into the current land use plans that are being updated. Additionally, I did just want to flag that for referral number 24.1, which is requesting status updates on the rebuild status of the property in Paharo, that's just across the bridge from Watsonville along Porter Drive, did want to let folks know that as of May 6, that demolition permit has been pulled and the contractor engaged to begin demolition. So you may start seeing and getting quarries as folks see demolition work happening on that property. There is still, to our understanding, work undergoing for redesigning the proposed rebuild project. We don't have any current information on that. And staff, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I really appreciate the discussion of referral number five. I'm going to avoid the code sections because they're too long, with respect to the update of the coastal general plan. Came away last time with a little lack of clarity. So I would like a definitive statement. We have no, I understand, we have no plan to comprehensively update the 1982 general plan at this time. Am I right?
That is correct. Thank you.
So the understanding is that we will be adding language in some discrete sections that weren't required or needed to be updated according to state law to the 1982 plan. And then all the additional updates that may be necessary will occur in updates of the individual land use plans that refer to that. Am I getting that right?
That is correct.
We have that on the record? Okay.
It is on the record. And I would like to add, it will, it's not just pertaining to the 1982 general plan from staff's perspective as well. There are also, we want to look at other state requirements that are upcoming, that are changing, that are required to be integrated, that would need, so there's some newer state law and additional requirements that are upcoming, required for general plans that would apply inland and coastal, that we are also looking at and that we will embed into our long-range work program, either how we'll address them countywide or specific in coastal and inland.
Through the chair?
Okay, so that's where this mud comes in. Where we have an update to a code section that's not part of the general plan, that can be countywide. But I would like the staff to continue to assure us that where there's any general plan update, it become back as coastal 82 plan update, 2010 inland plan update, so we can keep score. Because when we come back with something that says countywide, we don't know where it fits in necessarily in each of those places. So that's where I'm wanting this clarity to be coming forward and to have us adopt it going forward, so we don't continually have to revisit that over time, and we know what we're, our land use plans mean to address. So just really clearly, if it's, if it's an update to a code section that's not part of the general plan, then it could be countywide, but otherwise, it could not. It would be both one in one plan and then the other. And if it's said on it, that would be really helpful.
So staff understands that, too. When we refer to countywide, to be clear for countywide general plan amendments, to distinguish inland, coastal, and coastal by land use plan areas.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, thank you for that conversation, discussion. And so we're going to go ahead and move to the approval, acceptance of the minutes. That's approval of the March 12 and March 26, 25 Planning Commission meeting minutes. So are there any commissioners that would like to?
I have a question.
To ask a question or pull an item, or, go ahead, Commissioner Monsalve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am wondering, in light of there being seven of us here, if those of us who were absent for one of the meetings were to abstain from the vote, would approval still carry?
Yes, I believe that approval is the majority of the quorum. So if there are six members, I guess a four to vote would still apply. At least that's what I understand, unless I'm wrong.
No, as long as the remaining commissioners that are on the dais that are able to cast their votes for an individual item maintain our quorum, then those items can be considered. If there were a tie vote, because it's an even, even number, that would be a different consideration. So if, so a quorum is?
Six.
Is a quorum officially six, Robert?
Well, I think, I thought, is it five? I don't think five is a quorum. I think it has to be a majority, I think. Ten?
Quorum.
Six, okay. So yes, so if there's an item that someone needs to recuse themselves for today, and we get to five, then we would not have a quorum for that item, and we would need to continue it and bring it back for a quorum.
Thank you. That brings me to Part Two, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. You still have the floor.
Part Two of my question. When it comes to adopting minutes of meetings, Council, it was always my understanding that the board can vote to it was always my understanding that the board can vote to adopt meeting minutes even if we had not attended that meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, so legally speaking, there's no need for those of us who were absent for a meeting to recuse ourselves or abstain from meeting minute adoption?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you. So I wasn't here on March 12, so I will abstain from the vote just because I didn't review the video, and I don't want to vote on something I didn't review on, even though I trust you guys.
I think, and I'll look to county council for clarity, it's been my understanding that minutes are a bit different than taking actual appropriate authority action on an item, where if you're not present, you're not taking action on any of the items that were heard, you're simply, as a part of the motion, agreeing that these fairly represent and that those who were at the meeting had brought up any other issues. So there's not the need, if you weren't there for minutes, to recuse yourself. If you're comfortable, I believe you can state for the record that you were not present, but you are approving these minutes as appropriate.
Through the chair. So I'm just going to acknowledge that here's a record of what happened, and that's it then. Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? I guess this would be the time, if anybody would like to pull any of the minutes or comment on any of the meeting as far as the information in the minutes. Seeing no commissioners, is going to open a public hearing to see if anybody here in the chambers would like to address or comment on the minutes of March 12 and March 26 of the Planning Commission meeting minutes. Seeing nobody come up to the podium, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails related to this item?
Chair, there are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom. But also, I don't believe we allowed public comment under the referral item. So once you get a chance, maybe we can go back and open that public comment period again.
Oh, under referral items. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, let's see, we will bring it back to the commission for a motion and a second.
I'll move, I'll approve the minutes of March 12 and March 26.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gomez. Do we have a second, Commissioner?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Work seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. And then which one of you can?
Just to allow the public to have public comment under referral items, I just want to make sure we give that opportunity.
Thank you. And going back under referrals, so with Planning Commission referrals in terms of some of the discussion we had by the commission, Mrs. Deal and Madam Secretary, is there anybody in here in the chambers that would like to address that particular item? Anybody on Zoom or any emails regarding the referrals item on the agenda?
Thank you, Chair. No, there are no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Thank you for keeping me on my toes because once in a while, you know, I'll make a mistake here or there. But anyways, thank you very much. As we move along to the next item on the agenda, we have Schedule Matters, and we have PLN 240029, Salamone, Alejandra, MTR, and Leah Therberry. I hope I got those names right. But again, we are going to ask the staff to go ahead and make a presentation on this particular item. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Gonzalez and Planning Commission. My name is McKenna Bowling, and today I will be presenting project file PLN 240029 Solomon. The subject parcels are located at 26217 and 26219 Atherton Place in Carmel within the Carmel Area Land Use Plan. Both properties are zoned medium density residential, two acres per unit density, design control overlays within the coastal zone. The proposed project consists of a coastal development permit to allow a lot line adjustment between two legal lots of record resulting in two parcels. The existing adjoining property line is shown here in yellow. A fence was inadvertently constructed on two parcel B, and that fence is shown in a solid black line. Rather than rebuilding the fence, the owners seek approval of a lot line adjustment to establish new property lines that align with the existing fence. There is no development being proposed as part of this submittal, and the only, the project only consists of the lot line adjustment. The resulting parcel sizes continue to meet the minimum building site and conform to site development standards. The project went before the Carmel Highlands Land Use Advisory Committee on April 7 and was voted four to zero in support of the project as proposed. Staff received a letter from the applicant requesting the correction of minor typos and cross referencing the square footages and acreage throughout the resolution and conditions. Staff agrees, and with those changes incorporated, staff recommends that the planning commission find the project categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15305 of the SEQA guidelines and approve a coastal development permit to allow a lot line adjustment between two legal lots of record to correct a standing fence. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. So we bring it back to the Planning Commission. Commissioners, are there any questions from staff or comments? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. This is not so much about this project, but in general. What is the zoning density again? You said two acres per unit. That didn't sound right. Is it two units per acre?
It is zoned MDR 2, which is two acres per unit density.
Okay, so these are both legal non-conforming lots that existed, that exist that are below the zoning density, correct?
Correct.
And the end result is that neither of them's going to be smaller than it was before, right?
That is correct.
Okay. That's the key, that we aren't reducing any already non-compliant lot to it's smaller. And that's a finding in here that I didn't have because I didn't have my packet. It says that in here? Yes, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? If, seeing none of the commissioners. So with that, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have the agent or property owner that would like to come up to the podium and address the commission?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Joel Panzer with Maureen Rockplony Consultants. We were hired by Douglas Oldfield, the attorney for the Solomon Trust. As expressed by staff, this is a pretty straightforward item. Ms. Solomon passed away in preparing the property for sale on behalf of the trust. They did a survey and discovered, as you tend to find throughout the county, fences don't always represent property lines. In this case, the two adjoining neighbors decided, you know what, it's best to just go through the lot line adjustment to correct the errors staff pointed out rather than have to rebuild the fence. So they're both okay with that. I'm only speaking on behalf of the Solomon Trust. Maybe Mr. Leatherberry and Mrs. Leatherberry are on Zoom and if they care to chime in. So with that, staff has recognized the very minor edits to the staff report that we've asked for clarity. We've read the report, the findings and evidence, the conditions of approval, and we're in agreement. And we hope the Planning Commission will support staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to come to the podium to address the commission on this particular item? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails that are here for this related item or for this item?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. With that, I guess I'll bring it back to the commission. And Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Question for staff. The applicant did send a letter with some minor corrections. Are those accepted by staff and included now in the recommendation? Would they be?
Yes, they would be.
Staff would support those?
Staff would support the changes.
That being the case, I'd like to move staff's recommendation with the changes as noted in this hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Shaw makes a second. And so any further comments, questions, discussions with the commission, commissioners? Okay, all those in favor of the motion so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. And so with that, we go to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is PLN 240222, Heatherington, Roy, and Maria Trust. So with that, I will go ahead and ask the staff to make a report on this particular item.
Good morning, Chair Gonzalez and commissioners. My name is Hiya Honorato, and I will be presenting staff's report on PLN 240222 for Heatherington. The property is located at 8125 Carina in Carmel with the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan. The property is zoned as rural density residential with a maximum gross density of 10 acres per unit and urban reserve and design control zoning district overlays. The project consists of construction of a single-family residence with an attached three-carriage garage and detached accessory dwelling unit with a lower-level garage and a detached barn development on slopes in excess of 25% and removal of 10 trees. There are two building envelopes created on the parcel through the Tahima subdivision as lot number 80 per tract number 1336 of the Kenyatta Woods North Phase 1. The site plan includes a new paved driveway to both the main dwelling and a separate driveway for the ADU, which are located within the two building envelopes. Site improvements also include the removal of 10 oak trees. North and south elevations as shown here. East and west elevations of the main house as shown here, as well as the north and south elevations of the ADU. And east and west elevations of the ADU and the barn elevations shown here. The proposed exterior colors and materials are consistent with the area's settings and surrounding residences. Colors include off-white stucco and zoned veneer walls with clay tile roofing, metal frame windows and doors, and an iron stair railing. Development with, the development within the Tahima subdivision includes similarly large custom homes and will have a comparatively similar bulk and mass to other residences within the subdivision and surrounding area. The proposed project will not be visible from Highway 68 or other common public viewing areas. There are a total of 10 coast live oak trees proposed for removal pursuant to Title 21, Section 21.64.260, a use permit is required for the removal of protected trees that are six inches or greater in diameter measured at breast height. The parcel is heavily forested, and tree removal is required for development that must stay within the building envelopes. The driveway in proposed development were designed to not impact any landmark trees, which are indicated in green here. Resiting the main dwelling or barn would not reduce impacts to trees and would most likely increase the number of trees, including landmark trees. The proposed project includes 2,823 square feet of development on slopes in excess of 25%. Pursuant to the general plan policy, OS 3.5, development on slopes that exceed 25% is prohibited unless a use permit is obtained, and the appropriate authority finds that there is no feasible alternative that would allow development to occur on slopes less than 25%, or the proposed development better achieves the goals, policies, and objectives of Monterey County General Plan and applicable land use plans. The project is confined to two specific building envelopes that are .31 and 1.95 acres. And as proposed, the project buildings sit entirely within these boundaries. Shifting this development would result in substantial impacts to protected trees, including the removal of landmark trees, and would not eliminate development on slopes due to the irregular and sporadic sloping of the parcel. If the main dwelling were to shift towards the left, landmark trees are impacted. If the main dwelling were to shift down, it would still impact slopes in excess of 25%. Similarly, the proposed single-family dwellings driveway is also located on steeper slopes and avoids landmark trees. The ADU is situated below a heavily wooded grove area that it, and as it sits now, there are no impacts to trees. There are several landmark trees located south of the ADU as well. The proposed development is the most feasible location, minimizes development on slopes in excess of 25%, and better achieves the goals and policies and objectives of the 2010 general plan and Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan. The project was brought before the Greater Monterey Peninsula Advisory Committee on March 3, 2025, and the LUAC members voted unanimously to recommend approval as proposed. The project meets the criteria of a Class III categorical exemption of the SEQA guidelines as a construction of a single-family residence on an undeveloped residentially zoned property. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project qualifies for a Class III categorical exemption and approve a combined development permit for the construction of a single-family dwelling, ADU and barn, and associated site improvements, the removal of 10 coast live oak trees, and development on slopes in excess of 25%. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners? I do have a question. I know we've talked about this in the past, but when we talk about no feasible alternative, and I believe it was over 2,000 square feet, we're supposed to be on slopes over 25 degrees or whatever, slopes. And so I know we've mentioned this, or at least some of the commissioners in the past, it's like, I personally believe there's a feasible alternative in a sense that you can make the house smaller instead of like the size of the house. But that's something that I guess we would have to continue talking about eventually or at some point. But I do have a question as far as also on on fire. I heard you say that it was heavily forested, and was the fire department or okay with that, especially when we talk about fires? Is it heavily more than other areas, or what does heavily forested mean?
If we could share staff, right? So addressing the ADU first, there is a grove that is highlighted in green on the screen here. So there are no clearings for removal for trees for the development of where the ADU is situated at this time. And below that are also additional landmark trees. As far as the main residence is concerned, you can see that there are landmark trees that are going to be preserved. They are kind of to the northeast of the project as seen on the screen. A fuel management plan was submitted with the project application, and the recommendation for for pruning and maintenance is a part of the fuel management plan.
And I'm assuming that this goes to the fire department?
Correct.
And so, they didn't have any comments or they were fine with it?
There were no comments from the fire department.
Okay, thank you. With that, any other? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Following up on the chair's comment about size and slope, when the Tahima subdivision was established, did the EIR consider potential development on slope when they established these building envelopes? For those of you who haven't been up there, it's a very extensive subdivision and there was a lot of process around establishing it. And I think there was a lot of environmental work. So, my question is, when they established those building envelopes within the Tahima subdivision, did they make an environmental evaluation of potential development on slopes? I know they did for with respect to trees. So, did that happen?
Yes, it was evaluated for the building envelopes, but however, it did require a separate entitlement for the specific development of the parcel.
I understand that and I'm simply responding to the chair's concern, I think rightful concern, about allowing development on slopes sometimes and not other times without saying that it's too big or too small or the kinds of things we talked about on individual properties. It's just that this subdivision has had so much process around it, it's part of the whole. And personally, even given that the idea of dusting that big of a house doesn't appeal to me, that is what was envisioned when the subdivision was established and kind of what was evaluated in terms of the impact of the whole development. That's why they're in these building envelopes. At least that's the way I understood it when it happened. So, I guess it's more of a conversation. So, that's one of the things that for me makes this case different from some other cases empirically, like not just me feeling about it, but actually something that happened differently around it. So, I just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Gomez?
The average size of the homes in that area, square footage, do we have a sense for it? I'm looking at one online and it looks a lot bigger than, yeah.
That is correct. The two images on the screen are both on Carinae. So, they are two developments that are within the neighborhood.
And the LUAC was unanimous in supporting this project?
That is correct.
And we do have one letter, right? One letter, at least I saw one letter that came out from, I'm not sure which neighborhood, but one of their neighbors in the neighborhood supporting the project. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? With that, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing and with the agent or the property owner come up to the podium and address the commission.
Good morning. My name is Eric Miller. I'm the architect for the project. So, can you put the slide back up that showed the trees and the slopes? So, if you look at the project, we spent a lot of time carefully positioning the house and the ADU. If you look at the house, it's really not in the slope area. It's really more the driveway or the access to the property. So, we concur with staff, moving the house would actually impact the mature landmark trees and we think it fits nicely on the property. I did meet the two immediate neighbors last Friday. Mr. Thol was one of them who just wrote the letter. Both of them supported the project and felt very positive about it and looking forward to a new neighbor at the site. And, you know, so we hope that you guys can approve this today and let my client move on and build the house. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission? If not, then thank you. And with that, will anybody else in the chambers that would like to come and address the commission on this particular item? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails related to this particular project?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, do we have any other questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Deal?
Comment is that I really appreciated the staff report on this because I felt it was very clear and really helped me understand. I would only have added a little more historical information about the subdivision as a whole to make sure we were understanding the setting, although I'm sure we all do. But that being said, I'd like to move staff's recommendation in this matter.
Commissioner Deal has made a motion and Commissioner Monsalve has made a second. Any further questions, comments, concerns? There being none, then all those in favor of the motion so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. With that, we move on to REF 250008, the County of Monterey Capital Improvement Program, CIP for fiscal year 2025/26. And the staff will make a presentation on this.
Great afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is John Snively. I'm the Administrative Operations Manager with Public Works Facilities and Parks, and I'll be giving a brief verbal update on the CIP item before you today before opening up to any questions, and we look forward to the review that we have. Per Monterey County Code, Public Works Facilities and Parks Department is charged with preparing and implementing various capital projects for the County of Monterey, and this includes both road, bridges, traffic projects, as well as facility projects for our county buildings. As part of that process, PWFP Department prepares a list of capital projects that is provided to the Board of Supervisors for adoption and inclusion in the annual budget process. And as part of that capital improvement plan development, per Government Code 65401, we are tasked with bringing that proposed list of public works to the public, to the planning commission for their review and findings as to whether or not the proposed public works are in compliance with the general plan, the 2010 general plan for noncoastal areas, or the local coastal program in 1982 general plan for the coastal zone. PWFP staff prepares this list of capital projects. That list is then provided to Housing and Community Development staff for their assistance with the review and in comparison to these plans. And that report is provided to the planning commission for your findings and recommendations back to staff, as well as to the Board of Supervisors. As in past years, we have provided a resolution with the recommendation that the planning commission find that the list of major public works projects contained in the County of Monterey CIP for the upcoming fiscal year, which are listed in Exhibit A to the resolution, conforms to and are consistent with these plans. Our Exhibit A attachment is broken up into four sections. Section 1.1 gives you a summary of the various projects that have not been previously reviewed by the planning commission, along with some budgetary information that will be going forward to the Board of Supervisors. Section 1.2 of that attached Exhibit A provides more detail on the projects, the works that is expected to be completed in the upcoming fiscal year, and staff's comparison with the plans. Sections 1.3 and 1.4 list other projects that are active in the upcoming CIP for the coming fiscal year. However, those projects have been flagged as previously reviewed by the planning commission with no significant changes requiring additional review, and so those are provided for reference. And so, in addition to the resolution in Exhibit A, we also provide a brief summary of the capital improvement development plan, so you understand how the planning commission's role fits into the overall CIP development. Beginning of the beginning of the calendar year, we start reaching out to departments for a list of their projects, as well as working internally with our project managers to determine what work is expected to continue or start in the next fiscal year. We take these lists of proposed projects and any staff recommendations to our county's capital improvement committee, and they are charged with advising on recommendations for not only the funded projects, but any unfunded needs that they would like to prioritize. We then take those recommendations and list to our county budget committee, which makes additional comments and recommendations regarding funding for projects. The budget workshop that was recently held in April is a time for the board to discuss their various priorities and projects that they would like staff to highlight, and we will be returning to the Board of Supervisors at the end of this month for the budget hearings where additional decisions will be made in terms of funding capital projects. And right before we get there, here we are, the planning commission today to review the consistency of that CIP. So, with that, I will end staff's comments. We also have additional public work staff on Zoom call to answer any additional questions, and that will conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Now, we bring it back to the commissioners. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I'm probably going to need a lot of help understanding this. I'm looking at page 41, the Salinas-Paharo Road, Area 6. So, this project description is not like, it's not final, correct? Because this is still in like the design phase. I wanted to clarify that this is a really loose idea and just because I see this in here doesn't mean that I'm going to see it in the future, this exact what they're proposing.
Perhaps some public work staff could speak directly to that project while I'm trying to look up that specific.
Thank you.
This is the road diet?
Yeah, so through the chair, I'm stuck on this one. So, this proposal came forward last year maybe at a community meeting and we had maybe like 65, 70 members of the public, business owners, residents in attendance, and it went over like a lead balloon. It was awful. The plan is complete garbage and should be scrapped entirely. And instead of hiring an outside plan, you know, consultant, whoever came up with the plan, they were there, get somebody else who lives here or knows the area because it's a terrible idea. And I don't think the general plan endeavors to make a level of service that's worse than what is already bad. So, I don't know how this is, we were told, the community was told that this would go back into design and we wouldn't see this. This was, okay, they heard us. So, for me to see this same thing here, the road diet reduced from four lanes to two lanes on Salinas Road, I don't want to see this in here. So, I want to make sure that this is definitely like on the chopping block potentially when it comes before whoever is going to make the final decision.
And I do see that it is referenced as continuing that design phase, and I believe we have our director, Randy Ishi, who has his hand raised, who could also speak to
There we go. Thank you very much, Chair and members of the commission. Commissioner Shaw, with regards to Project Segment 6 in the Paharo area, which is a grant-funded project through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, as you have accurately noted, there was a town hall regarding this project's concept design at the time of which it was brought forward to the community. Staff heard and took into account all of the comments that were expressed to them, including the remonstration to the idea of a road diet itself. Since that point in time, design staff took this back to Caltrans, who is our liaison oversight body for the grant, and conferred with them about the removal of the road diet component and effectively only doing the bicycle and pedestrian improvements noted in the concept design, completing the design phase while still being, asking the question if we're still eligible for grant funds. Upon a long conference and review by Caltrans, they did confirm that removal of that road diet, which had much concern from the public, as well as some of the restrictions and training movements, could be removed and the county still be eligible for the grant funding. Fortunately, Caltrans reported that we would still be eligible for grant funding, so the design is being completed, incorporating the community's comments and changes to the design, and effectively it's been a reduced scope, mostly as a maintenance-level project with bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And we're available for any further questions.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ishi. That was extremely helpful. So, I guess I'm just concerned that this is in, this is documented in this way that we're going to be voting on, and I would rather see what Mr. Ishi conveyed right now instead of this, that still has the reduced four lanes to two lanes. And I don't know if I'm being overly picky about this, if that really matters. So, maybe if somebody, who knows, could let me know.
Through the chair, if I may, the action that's being taken today is not approving the project scopes, and we will continue to make updates to our CIP document as it goes to the board at the end of June when it is officially adopted. So, we can ensure that the final descriptions that were pulled from the database here for this version of the report are updated so that those, that information is accurately reflected in the action the Board of Supervisors will take, which will adopt the project scope.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other commissioners or any addition? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I want to first just start by saying that I recognize and appreciate the enormous strides that have been made to make this process meaningful and understandable and, I hope, useful over the years. We've gone from what appeared to be something that we weren't supposed to understand to something where we really can understand and engage and hopefully contribute. And I want to thank Public Works for all the work to do that. I particularly highlight and appreciate the continued recognition of correlating the priorities expressed in the general plans with the capital improvement program that is proposed in the Exhibit C addition, because I asked for that, we continue to receive it, and I think it's very informative about how the plan continues to interact with our actions. So, it's one of the concrete places where that occurs, and I guess I just want to express absolute appreciation for that. And then I wanted to just ask staff, the best way for individuals who are concerned that their particular project be recognized as a priority? For example, my neighbors in Palo, Colorado, what is the best way for them to express those concerns and when?
Through the chair, so we, there's, I would say, several different approaches that could be taken. We are published, we publish a copy of our capital improvement plan that is a digital access on our county website, and so projects can be reviewed along with contact information, how to reach myself to any, to address any comments or questions specific to CIP projects. In terms of the roads and bridges projects, we also have our request for service or request for a project information that can be submitted to our county staff as well. So, I would highlight those. We are currently in the process of updating our websites to provide a clearer path in how to count, contact county staff to share any concerns or requests that they may have.
Follow up through the chair. Palo, Colorado Road has been closed since 2017. People are not going to add additional requests that it be open, having had this conversation for now a number of years. So, the question is, nor are they going to continue to review documents hoping that it will appear, because it always appears in the same kind of state that it appears. So, for these longstanding issues, the question really becomes, when does advocacy for increased priority and attention make sense for these individuals? Because so far, nothing has much, I mean, $585,000 is better than nothing, but it's not going to get the project done. And so, we have now the access to the national forest in the back of that road and the individuals that are beyond the closure continuing long-term to be planning their lives around that limited access. When is the time for them? Because, you know, calling me is probably not the answer, and I would venture to even speak for the supervisor's office to say additional calls to the supervisor's office would have the same question, is how can we best provide that advocacy to somebody who's going to actually do something about it?
Through the chair, again, if I may, in relation to the Palo, Colorado work, I understand that there are some very specific circumstances that are guiding that process and as I'm working on the facility side, I'm not as personally familiar with those. I would look to our director, Ishi, if he has anything to speak to those. I would also highlight, as you refer to the supervisors, that in terms of our capital project process, the capital improvement project process, the Capital Improvement Committee is the body that's charged with helping to advocate and push for those capital project priorities, in addition to the work plans that staff submits. And so the CIC, the Capital Improvement Committee, has remained very active in advocating for various needs throughout the county on behalf of our residents.
Commissioner Deal, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate all that. But that doesn't get to what can people do that is most useful to forward their concerns? We understand that this is all in place. Looking at what's on the ground, people are, you know, rightly saying, all of this has not resulted in inaction. So I want to make sure that my, my situation continues to be elevated. So do I call my supervisor once a week? Do I write letters at a given time to a given body, saying that people need to continue to follow the entire capital improvement process? And figure out what to do that is probably more than those folks are going to continue to be able to do since 2017. So I'm looking for guidance I can pass along to somebody who calls me on the phone and say, what's happening with Palo, Colorado? What can I do to move that along? And sit and wait is not really proving to be a very good answer. And it's all under control because somebody's meeting and talking about this at the Board of Supervisors Committee is not proving to be a very convincing answer. So they want to do something. So what is it that I could then offer for them to do to make sure that their, their concerns continue to be heard?
Through the chair, if I may, this is Randy Ishi, Director of Public Works with Plaza Parks. And if it is agreeable to the Commission, I'd like to respond to Commissioner Deal's very pointed and very pronounced question, because it's a very good one.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. And Commissioner Deal, the public there who have contacted you do raise excellent points in that it has been a very long time that this road has been on the county's capital improvement program, five-year plan. As with many of the longstanding projects that have long timelines to them, there are certain nuanced challenges to each of them. In the case of Palo, Colorado, it's not only environmental, but it's also a funding one. What we would implore the public to do, who do contact you, is not only approach the department through the avenues expressed by Mr. Snively, but also to contact us directly, including myself, through letters and other advocacy in that, in that format. With Palo, Colorado, the challenge we've had there, as expressed before, was not only environmental, but also financial. In short, the project is a close to $17 million project at this juncture, with only approximately $3.5 billion that have been obligated by the federal government through FEMA, or the Federal Emergency Management Act, disaster relief funds. So we're looking for those avenues to address that funding gap. The department has applied for a grant that we are very hopeful on hearing results on soon, that would address north of $10 million of that funding gap. The grant is called the National Civil and Federal Lands and Tribal Program Grants. And so what we encourage the public to do is to continue contacting the department directly, as well as the Supervisor's Office, should they choose to do that. So that way, we can relate to them the other avenues of support that they can provide us with at the right time, either through the federal elected delegates or through state-elected delegates. And in those avenues, those are ways where they can have contact with us that are meaningful and move the ball forward on a project like this. It does take a lot of time, the department acknowledges that, and this is one of the more unique, long-term, challenging projects we have. Again, every one of them is unique, but these are ways where members of the public can be apprised more of what's actually happening behind the scenes, as well as the boots on the ground. And thank you very much. We yield the floor.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Ishi. That's extremely cogent. I would suggest that, given the long time and the, I guess, the overwhelmed nature of the issue, I'm wondering if Public Works would consider regular public outreach about available opportunities to be helpful? And we have some good community outlets that we can offer for sending that information out. If there was any way for the process to be a little less, a little more proactive on the part of Public Works to help people know what they can do that would be meaningful, I would very much appreciate that and happy to take a discussion of that offline. And just want to again, express my appreciation. I think everybody knows that what the issues really are, but they want to know what's happening. And forward progress will be celebrated. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Gomez?
I think I have three questions. One relates to, I volunteer out at one of the parks regularly, a coach out there, Manzanita Park. One relates to how does the county work with them in terms of capital projects with the, with that park? I specifically, because I know there's a nonprofit that kind of manages and makes a lot of improvements themselves. The second one relates to San Lucas and their water situation down there that's been going around for over a decade. I'm just checking to see, Randy, what the anticipation is in terms of getting some state and federal funding for that project, in addition to what you're allocating here specifically. And the last one relates to, how do these projects connect with the county sales tax that just passed last year? Does that mean that there's going to be more money available for capital projects in the future?
Through the chair, if I may, Commissioner Gomez, thank you for your questions. It's been a few years since I've looked at it, but my understanding, in terms of Manzanita Park, is there is a contract in place. And that contract outlines the roles and responsibilities, funding, et cetera, for the various capital improvements that happen there. I would have to defer to the park staff for the specifics on that, but my understanding is that those are handled slightly different than our other parks, roads, and facilities, which are directly managed and implemented by the county Monterey Public Works facilities and parks. So that's a bit of an outlier there in terms of what, what's happening and that specific site. In regards to the San Lucas, and again, I'll defer to Randy if there's additional information, but my understanding is there is at least one grant opportunity that's being pursued in addition for design development work, and then to implement a project there in that place. And I believe that is reflected here in the CIP as a project for the San Lucas Drinking Water Connection. It shows a budget of about $300,000 this coming fiscal year for that ongoing design and grant application work, followed hopefully by construction and infrastructure work. And then finally, to your question regarding, I believe, Measure AA is what you were referring to. At this point, staff does not have any available information, nor has there been identified any specific funding there. And so we are not able to, to yet, look at that in terms of a funding source. And that's been discussed at the board, whether or not we can pre-plan before that money has, has been recognized. So at this point, our CIP does not reflect Measure AA, but we look to the CIO's Budget Office and to the Board of Supervisors to provide direction to staff if and when funding becomes available, as to what projects and to what resources will apply to that.
The tax is being collected, through the chair, the tax is already being collected, as I understand it, or no?
I couldn't speak to the specifics of the tax measure and the revenue collection.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the park staff, I believe you mentioned, is there somebody on Zoom or available to give a little bit more information related to the first item?
Through the chair, this is Director Ishi, responding to the first two questions of the three raised by Commissioner Gomez, very good questions. And the third question was exceptionally and accurately relayed by Mr. Snively. We do not have any further to add to that, the third question regarding Measure Double A Funds. But to answer your, your question, Chair, Measure Double A Funds were starting to be collected in the month of April of 2025. Going back to the first question on Manzanita Park, as stated by Mr. Snively, there is a concession agreement between the North County Youth Recreation Association and the county, who is the landowner of Manzanita Park. The roles and responsibilities are conveyed in that agreement, and that agreement is under negotiation at this time. However, under the pre-existing agreement, the capital projects are outlined in that agreements, such that North County Youth Rec Association has responsibility for them and needs to work with the county to ensure compliance of said improvements, with both the local coastal plan, as well as other permitting requirements. Moving on to the second question regarding the San Lucas Clean Drinking Water Project, as noted, the county was successful in acquiring a federal earmark through Congressperson Lofgren's office, which we are greatly appreciative of. That project endeavors on the pathway of providing clean water in the form of a pipeline connecting the community of San Lucas to the community of King City. However, we recognize that there are evolutions that occur over time, and that there's a current study being undertaken through the State Water Resource Control Board, where there could be an evolution of the project. And so we are looking for the final conclusion of that study, the recommendation of the community, buy-in from the community, and then finding those touchpoints for how to move the project forward. And if things need to evolve, then staff looks forward to how to make it evolve to the best way suited for the community. And we yield the floor. Thank you very much.
Through the chair.
Thank you for the information. Commissioner Gomez?
I just wanted to say that Dan Thompson and that association, Dan Thompson has been involved with Manzanita Parks and the building of it. I think they're doing an incredible job. And I think that they're doing it, essentially, they volunteered thousands of hours and raised thousands of dollars to build that park. So I want to just acknowledge that and say they're doing a great job out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Mendoza?
Thank you, Chair. A while back, I had actually requested the possibility of maybe having a crosswalk illuminated Crossing Hall Road, going from Las Lomas, driving Crossing Hall Road, just because the traffic there is 45 miles an hour, and it's not illuminated, and it's really dark out there. So it's kind of a safety, safety situation that we're having out there, and there's been loss of life there. So I think that we should have, that should be somewhat of a priority, just because, like I said, there's been a lot of accidents, there's been people getting hit, there's people that have lost their life there. So if the crosswalk was just illuminated, so they have veteran visibility that there is a crosswalk there, it would just make things so much, so much better for our community. It's the only crosswalk we have from, basically would be like the east side of Las Lomas into the west side, and it crosses Hall Road. So it's really, really important that we make that a priority. I don't know what needs to be done, or if that can be added here, but that would really be great. Thank you.
The staff, want to respond, or?
Yes, through the chair, this is Director Ishi. Excellent points, Commissioner. There's both near-term and long-term actions that could be taken on that, and your points are very astute and are duly noted. Near-term, we'll take that up with our traffic engineering staff to perform a traffic engineering study to assess the concerns with that crosswalk there at approximately the, what I believe is the Silver Road and Hall Road intersection, as well as the Silver, the Hall Road and Las Lomas Drive intersections, because both of those have been ones where we've had some pedestrian collisions that have occurred. What we would add long-term is that safety improvements along the entire G-12 corridor, contemplated by the G-12 corridor study. And one of the areas that were highlighted was Project Segment 3, and that's effectively the Hall Road corridor portion of G-12, which incorporates the community of Las Lomas. Staff have been trying for the last cycles through various grant opportunities to apply for Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds, in addition to other grant funds. Thus far, our efforts have not been successful, but we are continuing to try and continue to improve each of our applications. So again, long-term, we're pursuing the grant opportunity so we can do the safe pedestrian, bicyclist, and multimodal safety improvements along that portion of G-12. But near-term, we'll take up your points with our traffic engineering staff to assess and look into what other countermeasures could be employed at this time. And thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I guess, just to ask, while Mr. Ishi is on the phone, as far as the, what is it, Salinas Road and Fruitland area, is that just, based on what I'm seeing here on page 40, it seems like there's just no, we're just seeking funding, and there's kind of nothing in the works other than seeking funding? We're just on hold in the holding pattern until there's potential funding to do anything better with that intersection? Is that correct?
Through the chair, this is Director Ishi. We confirm that at this juncture, the longer-term plans are in exceedance of the county's current road fund capacity, and so we are looking for long-term grant funds or to do the long-term projects. That said, there are other exploratory activities being conducted by others, such as the Transportation Agency for Monterey County, who are doing their Safe Frost to School program study efforts in the North County. And there's some long-term projects that they have planned out there, as well as some near-term countermeasures. So we're looking forward to how we incorporate those into the county's roadway networks. So a couple of different efforts are being undertaken at this time.
Okay, thank you. I guess, so it's, there's nothing specific to Fruitland and Salinas Road then, to make, to improve on that at this time? We're just still just kind of looking at it through other agencies?
So staff are looking at it through other agencies. However, there's further action that could be taken. We'll talk with our traffic engineering staff. There's more interim countermeasures that could be done. At this juncture, we are continually monitoring that area and have noticed a decline in the number of collisions and severity collisions that occurred in that location. That said, we do have a paving project coming up for Elkhorn Road, which does extend up to the Elkhorn intersection. Again, it's a repaving project and resurfacing project, so it's treating what's existing there. However, we will be refreshing the motorist experience through the enhanced delineation of pavement markings and signage in that area. And we yield the floor.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, we're going to open a, a public hearing. And this is a time for anybody that is in the chambers that would like to come and address the commission, this would be the time to do it. Seeing none, we're going to go to see if there's anybody that would have emailed any information, or if there's anybody in Zoom that would like to address the commission.
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to the commission. And so I guess we would have to, a motion and a second. Commissioner Deal has made the motion, and Commissioner Gomez made the second on this item. Any further comments, questions, discussions, concerns? Commissioner Deal?
Yes, I'd move that we recommend, recommend that we, the resolution that was been provided, but also wanted to incorporate the changes that we were discussed here at this hearing with Commissioner Shaw with respect to the Paharo area, going forward, that that was going to be part of the motion.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Gomez, is that acceptable to you?
Yes. I'm assuming that's consistent with, with Director Ishi has said about the project. So yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Anyway, all those in favor of the motion, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carried 7-0. With that, we move to other matters, and that's, I guess, to appoint Suzanne Kushner to the Carmel Unincorporated Highlands Land Use Advisory Committee. And staff?
No, so staff is included with the packet, the LUACs, the statement of interest from Ms. Kushner, and is available for questions or comments if the commission should have.
Commission, any questions, comments? Commissioner Deal?
If there are none, I'd like to go ahead and move that we appoint Suzanne Kushner to the Carmel, Unincorporated Carmel Highlands Land Use Advisory Committee and welcome her with open arms, because we still need more people there.
Thank you. I'm going to, I believe I- I'm going to, I believe I, I need to have a public hearing on this item? Do I, I need a public hearing on the appointment?
You'd have public comment.
I mean, public comment, I'm sorry. Public comment. So anyways, is there any public comment on this particular item? I don't see anybody here in the chamber, so I'm not sure if there's anybody on Zoom or any?
No, Chair, there are no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Okay, and so with that, then we have a motion from Commissioner Deal, seconded by Commissioner Monsalve. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion so indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And I don't know what to say, congratulations, because it's going to be a lot of work. But anyways, with that, let's see, welcome aboard Mrs. Suzanne Kushner. With that, we go to the department reports.
Thank you, Chair, commissioners. Yeah, so just a couple of reports I want to share today. One, I happily would like to introduce our newest and third principal planner, Sarah Wickel, who has joined our team as of Monday. She will be our principal planner, or is our principal planner, over the advanced planning team. So I'm glad she was here for the discussion around the general plan. We're working to, to onboard her now, get her integrated, and so look forward to her moving forward and helping to work with that team to continue usher items forward. So welcome to Sarah. I wanted to alert the commissioners that, and the public, that due to the board's budget hearings later this month, we've had to change location for the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. So that Planning Commission meeting will move to, will be at the Schilling Place Building, 1441 Schilling Place here in Salinas, at the Cayenne Room where we, for those who were on, where we previously met during the, the re-renovations of this room. So please note that for the next one, so folks get to the right place. The other update I wanted to share for you all is, yesterday, actually, Director Spencer provided a response to the Board of Supervisors on a referral, referral number 202318, and it was regarding an inquiry looking into obtaining and utilizing renters' data on renters to help monitor, basically to help monitor and assess how the rental market is and, and, well, I'm not going to try to represent the whole thing. Let me just say that, so Mr. Spencer did a presentation yesterday to the board, it was very well received. The board supported, we utilized renter census data from the, from the census, and the board supported continuing to utilize that census data rather than developing a different means of collecting data, and emphasized the importance of continuing to monitor periodically and share that data so that if there are dramatic changes in it, and otherwise, we can address it through discussions around housing and other programs that we have. They also specifically requested that staff present that data and information to the Planning Commission, so we will bring, be bringing that matter forward to you all in the near future for an informational item as well. I don't have any other department updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Commissioners? Now, this department report, do we have to, I guess it's not, do we open it to the public for comments or not, this particular item?
I think public comments or questions, should they have it on those items? Yeah.
Okay, so anybody in the chambers that would like to make any comments regarding the department report, this would be the time. Seeing none, is there anybody in Zoom or any emails regarding the department report?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you very much. With that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.